If I could have everyone's attention, do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
A motion by Tom and a second by Mike, all in favor? Unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve personnel, A, 1 through 4, B, 1 through 17, and C, 1 through 46?
So moved.
Motion by Tom and a second by Lindsay, all in favor? Unanimous. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. We have a full house tonight, I see. First on our agenda are the recognitions. Oh, I'm sorry. I checked that off. Yes, everybody stand and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we have recognitions. I'm looking forward to these. With Ms. Leann Rice is gonna...
Good evening. This is the best part of the board meeting, and I am so pleased and privileged to be able to share with you recognitions this evening. Our first recognition is going to be for our distinguished PBIS schools that have been recognized by the Georgia Department of Education. And I'd like to invite Tara Davis, who's our PBIS and climate coordinator, to recognize those schools.
I'm just gonna say a little, a couple of words before we do the recognition. I just wanted to thank Dr. Bearden and the board for allowing time for the schools to be recognized for their outstanding implementation of positive behavior intervention and support, otherwise known as PBIS. PBIS is a set of practices that school teams develop and implement that is reflective of their school community. The practices focus on improving a school's ability to teach and support positive behavior for all students. Rather than a prescribed program or curriculum, PBIS provides systems for schools to design, implement, and use data to evaluate effective school-wide classroom and student-specific supports. PBIS has over 30 years of research to support the practices, has a national center that is supported and funded by the U.S. Department of Ed, and in 2018, the Secret Service recognized PBIS as the prevention framework to help keep schools safe through the establishment of positive nurturing school environments. At the end of each school year, the Georgia Department of Education pulls outcome data to determine levels of recognition for PBIS schools. Schools are recognized at various levels. Tonight, we are recognizing schools that receive the highest level of recognition, which is distinguished. To reach this level of recognition, a school must implement PBIS for at least three years, demonstrate 90 to 100% of their schools have never received a major office discipline referral, and they have shown significant decreases in exclusionary practices such as in-school and out-of-school suspension. So before we recognize the school, I want to thank Todd Shirley and Steve Hahn for their trust and support with the implementation of PBIS as a prevention framework to make our schools safe, connected, and thriving. As I call each school, will the whole school come up? And I will hand the certificate to the principal and shake everybody's hand. We have lots of representatives from our schools today, so Coming Elementary, will you please come on up? Principal Jordan Livermore and Jennifer Emmeritt, thank you very much for all your hard work. Thank you. All right, our school proudly here, represented in blue. Yes, Whitlow Elementary School, school principal Don Bush. And next, we have Matt Elementary School, school principal June Trivel and her team. Okay, and for the, for our next school, for the second year in a row, I'd like to, Silver City Elementary School and their team, school principal Mike Sloup and his team. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Andrew, Erin, Jessica, Sally, thank you, Leah. And lastly, we'd like to recognize Forsyth Central High School again for the second year in a row. Will Dr. Josh Lo and his team come up, please? Thank you. Thanks, Josh.
It's like the holidays with presents all around. And we are gonna recognize, do our next recognition, so I'd like to invite the North Forsyth High School Competition Cheer Team to come forward. The North Forsyth High School Competition Cheer Team won the state championships, and they are led by coaches Jessica Wood, Abby Smith, and Reed Jackson. We have 19 competition cheerleaders here to celebrate this evening. Yep, lead the way.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We also know that winning a state championship is no easy feat, and we would like to recognize our parents who supported these girls. So if you are a parent of one of these state champions, please stand or wave your hand so we can thank you for your dedication and support. Our next recognition comes to us from Lambert High School, and I'd like to invite the Lambert High School iGym team to come stand next to me. This is the second year in a row that we are recognizing Lambert's iGym team for its incredible worldwide performance. The Lambert High School iGym, which stands for International Genetically Engineered Machine Team, secured a remarkable victory at the 2023 iGym Jamboree. They won the prestigious gold medal and finished in the top 10 among high school teams from all over the world. The Lambert iGym Team's project, CADLOC Phase II, wowed judges and peers with its groundbreaking approach to diagnosing coronary artery disease using microRNAs. We'd like to recognize coaches Pam Sealy, Kate Scherer, and Dr. Brittany Cantrell for their hard work. And again, we know that this feat does not come alone, so if you are a parent or a school member supporting the iGym team, if you would stand or wave so we can recognize your dedication and support. And then we will walk down and lead the way. Congratulations. 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 So good to see you. Our final special recognition tonight is very special to me. We are recognizing Gustavo Manriquez as our Forsyth County Employee of the Month. Gustavo, would you come stand next to me? Gustavo is the head custodian from Coming Elementary. Gustavo was hired by Forsyth County Schools in 2001. He has worked at Mashburn Elementary School, Brookwood Elementary School, and I'm very proud to say that I hired him as the head custodian at Coming Elementary School in 2016. I want to share a few comments from nominations that Gustavo received to let you know why he was chosen for this amazing award. Gustavo takes a great deal of pride in his work. Every single classroom and hallway is spotless due to his relentless commitment to our school. No matter how busy he gets, he is willing to stop everything to help a teacher, put together a piece of furniture, or hang something on the wall. Gustavo leads by example. You will never hear Gustavo say, "That's not my job." The pride he takes in his work has helped create a positive school culture. Teachers feel respected because they come into a clean and well-organized space each morning. We could not function without Gustavo. And from another, Gustavo is extremely dedicated to his work, his staff, and his school family. He is quick to help anyone with any task. He has a calm, can-do attitude. No job is too big or too little for him to prioritize incomplete. He is a role model for the many students we have, and especially for our students who are bilingual. Gustavo is kind, receptive, easygoing, and a great example to our student body. He engages the students and takes time to build relationships with the kids. He eats lunch in the cafeteria at different tables each day so he can chat with the kids and help build a lasting relationship with them. When called or radioed, he's quick to respond, and he always does whatever job he's tasked with with a smile. He plays a vital role in our school family. Mr. Manriquez exemplifies what it means to be an exceptional person who loves life, his job, and the people around him. He shows grace to the teachers and students every day, and he models how we should be professional and kind to others. And finally, and this was very hard, there were four pages. I've just picked a few. Finally, Gustavo is a huge asset to our school and to me. Whenever anything, and I mean anything, is needed, he is quick to respond and take care of it. He is easy to communicate with and works hard to try to solve the problem. I have worked in other schools, but they did not have a Gustavo like we do. Congratulations, Gustavo. Would Gustavo's family please rise so we can thank you for sharing him with us? I know the staff at Coming Elementary is very proud and very excited for all you do, Gustavo. Congratulations. And we'd also like to thank Jim &amp; Nix, the sponsor for our Employee of the Month. And it, okay. They are delicious. Oh, and we have a lost iPhone. Merry Christmas. And now it's my privilege to turn over for a superior spotlight to Kara Hudspeth from our Special Education Department, our Director of Special Education.
You're all welcome to stay, but since it's standing room only, if you want to go, you're welcome to do that, too. We'll wait a couple minutes, and if anybody wants to leave now, they can. But if you want to stay and hear the Superior Performance Spotlight, we'd love for you to stay also.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you, guys, for your time tonight. I'm Kara Hudspeth. I'm the Special Education Director here in Forsyth. And tonight, we wanted to talk to you a little bit about the work that we've been doing within our department to support the needs of our special education students in our community. So a couple of years ago, we sat as a, as a staff and really talked about what makes the learner experience for special education students truly special and unique. And we came up with these areas that you see on your screen, and this has now become our department initiative. So all of the professional learning that we push out and all of the resources are connected to one of these areas. And those areas are intervention, data, eligibility, accessibility, and self-advocacy. So you know, we had to have an acronym, so it's IDEAS. So all the work that we do and all the work that we push out to school teams is in some way connected to these areas. So it's really helped us to streamline all of those different resources and make sure that we're hitting all of the things that make that learner experience unique in special education. So tonight, we wanted to highlight some of the work that the accessibility team has, has put out. And to do that, I am proud to introduce Dr. Pam Majeris, one of our special education coordinators and a true expert in the field of communication and accessibility. And I'm regretting my heel choice while presenting with Dr. Majeris.
A little bit of high difference, but that's okay. Hello, Dr. Bearden, board members, Forsyth County staff and community members. Thank you for having me here today. I am a speech pathologist and, but I am currently the Related Services Coordinator in Special Education. I support several groups, but one of the groups I do support is the Assistive Technology Department. It's a small but mighty group of folks. I have two of them with me today. And I would like to kind of go over what I intend to talk about today. First, we're going to define assistive technology for folks who might not be familiar with it. We're going to define core vocabulary and what that means and what core words are in Forsyth County. So this is the only slide I will read because I don't like that, but I want to read it for you. This is the definition of assistive technology. Assistive technology is any item, piece of equipment, software, program, or product system that is used to increase, maintain, or improve the functional capabilities of persons with disabilities. In AT, we focus on access. That access can be physical access, visual access, any communication, any kind of access a student might need, and we use a host of tools to achieve that. And we ask the question, what tool or tools do they need in order to access academics or communication? Okay, so this is the interactive part. Who here has a smartphone? A few of us. That was actually mine, Dr. Bearden. It fell out of the bag. Yeah, it's a great day. Okay, so, so, yeah, perfect, right? Okay, so, so for those of us who use smartphones, has anybody ever used hands-free texting in your car? Anybody? Yes, a few of us. I hope so. Okay, so if you do, you are using speech-to-text, and that is a common tool that students with disabilities may require in order to access academics and able to demonstrate their work. We use it in our cars so we don't wreck and hurt others, and also so we don't get a ticket. But our students use that tool to help perform in the classroom. So I just wanted to give us something to relate to because we all use assistive technology. Some of us use word prediction on our phone. There's all kinds of things that are just readily available for us to use. So Forsyth County Assistive Technology, we, we, we focus in two areas, in academics and communication. We, both academics and communication use a variety of tools from very low-tech, like maybe a slant board, to position work for a student well, up to very high-tech options in, like a high-tech communication device that is very complicated but very specific to that student's needs and meets them where they need to be met to communicate. Tonight, I have Jen Elwood, who works in academics for assistive technology, and Amy Thompson, who is an AAC communications specialist in assistive technology. And I'm very fortunate that, A, they came with me, but B, they're, we really, they work with students and school teams to ensure that our kids can do what they need to do academically and then communicate. One of the tools that we, we use is a Core Word Board. The Core Word Board is based on core vocabulary. The idea of core vocabulary is well-researched and basically says that the majority of words we use come from a set of about 400 words in our speech. We do use extras, but really, it can be narrowed down to about 80% of the words we use are about 400 words total. So what happened was, they took that information along with AAC research at the time, and Amy was part of that team, and they created a Core Word Board. They used that research to determine the pictures that they used, the words that they used, the way it was laid out, the colors. You'll see it in just a second. Well, you have a copy of it. But it, it, it was very based in research, and in 2012, they rolled out the Forsyth County Core Word Board. Our Core Word Boards, the one you have in front of you is an eight-and-a-half by 11. We have every size known to man. I brought one here with me. It's a poster size. We, we customize them. We give them out as part of our core equipment for our classes of specialized instruction every year. We, we, they all look the same, just different sizes, because we want the, the words to be consistent. I attended the, one of the first Core Word Board trainings in 2012 when I was a speech therapist at Davis Creek Elementary. At that time, I was working at Matt. And I told Amy, I said, "I remember that training that day." And, and it started in 2012, and we really started thinking about that. It's a long time. COVID kind of didn't help us. We had to kind of restart it. But still, it is, it, we started it in 2012 here in Forsyth County. This is a picture of a Core Word Board, so the audience can see it. You can see how it's laid out. We're going to talk a little bit more about it in a minute. But I want to show you a video of a student that is using one with a speech therapist. I'm used to it touch screen. Isn't that terrible? This is Ian.
Bubbles. 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 Play bubbles. Ready? Go! Uh-oh, let's do it again. Ew, yuck! Yuck! Ready? Go! Ready? Go! Woo, big bubble. Big bubble. Do you want to do it again? Ready? Go! Uh-oh, let's try again. Ew, yuck! Sorry, it's not working. Sorry. Uh-oh. Sorry, try again. Big! Big bubbles. Did you like it? You like it? You want to play again? Play again. I want to play again. Want more? Oh, we better clean up. Yuck. Can you help? Can you help me? All right, let me...
I love that so much. So what you probably saw was Ian was being taught and modeled how to use the Core Board. And if you look at yours, the colors tell us what kinds of words they are. So the yellow is pronouns, the red ones like are the negative, like no or not. Light blue are the question. Light green are the helping verbs. Light, dark green are the regular verbs. The dark blue are descriptors, and the pink, I call them manners and useful words. But they, and you notice that it said "yuck," and it said "again." And so she was modeling that, hoping he would imitate her. We ultimately want them to be independent when they use this and be able to use this to communicate when they may not be able to use words. So we also, in 2022, worked with the Alliance Academy to create the Out and About Core Word Banner. And so I'm going to show you one of those. Well, my Jennifer, Amy are going to help us. So this is, is essentially the same thing, except at the top, we've added words that might be appropriate on the playground because we wanted these to be used on playgrounds and common spaces. And it also has instructions. It describes the colors, what they mean, and how somebody might use it out and about. The students at Alliance, so one of the head designers on the project was one of our former students, and she was very passionate about being part of the project. And what we did was Amy worked with the Alliance Academy so we could sell them at cost to schools, and they... And they, again, they bought them for their playgrounds and things like that, and, and cafeterias, and then we deliver them. We've still got a few folks want them, but we're really proud of our Out and About banner. And I want to show you a couple of pictures. This is one that Matt Elementary has on their playground. This is one that Midway has in a common area of their building, like a foyer area. And then, in 2023, we did another variation of the Core Word app, and we had, we had very little to do with it. It was actually a group of students that were computer science pathway students at Forsyth Central High School. Their teacher, Daphne John, had, had shown interest in creating an app that we could add to ClassLink so when students or teachers are in a classroom, they could access it on their touch panels. Now, I'm going to start this video. It's very fast. It's about seven seconds, and it's a student in a classroom activating it. So what they do is they push the icon on the panel, and it speaks it. So the student is going to tell you that they're all done. So we, it's quick. And I wanted to preface it. All done calendar. All done calendar. And so, that's it. But this was, we wa, we did went to a presentation where the gentlemen, they're all graduates of Central now, but they did a presentation and showed us the app. And then Kirk Godwin and Jason Nail helped us format it in such a way to get it on ClassLink. So it's under Teacher Tools now, that, so everybody has access to it on their board. And that, I want to thank you all for having us tonight. We, we love our jobs and love working with our students. And is there any questions?
Thank you so much for what you do. You guys have big hearts. So it's just amazing to see these kids, and they're excelling, and they're just happy to be there. And so, thank you.
We're very proud of them.
A lot of times, we, we don't see this kind of stuff, and I'm, I'm really appreciative that y'all are here tonight and explained this to us. That's so cool. And the kids created the app. It's a way to use all your resources, right?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too, the connecting with Alliance was in on the project, and then so utilizing the skills that we have within our county is just, it's really great.
Seeing the Gen Ed students be able to use the communication to communicate with their peers on the playgrounds and things like that. They can point to words, and the special education students can understand, and they, they can collaborate that way and play together and communicate.
Well, and we've even known some of our area churches and other community members have these up in their spaces. So it's, it's really great that the community embraces it, too. So we feel really fortunate and very well supported here in Forsyth. Thank you.
Do we need a recess? Okay, next on our agenda is public participation on agenda items. We have no one speaking tonight. Then we have the consent agenda. I assume everyone's had time to get questions answered and look at it. Do I have a motion to approve? A motion by Mike and a second by Lindsay, all in favor? Unanimous. And then we have the finance report with Mr. Larry Hamel.
What's that? Yes. Everybody should be happy about this. It's my one time to shine during the month.
He didn't see you clear the room with his name.
All right, tonight, we're going to talk about the November 2022 financial statements. And as always, we keep goal three in mind. So November is typically the month where we get the majority of our tax revenue this time of the year. So as you can see, we started the month off with about $98.7 million. As you can see, we ended the month with $318 million. Now, the good thing is, is we've transferred $237 million in the LGIP fund. If you think about the interest rate we're going to earn, that's going to be almost $900,000 for the month of December, just in interest earned alone for that amount of money. If you look at the revenue, you can see that we are at 95.13%. This year, last year, we're at 94.9, so we're slightly ahead. The funny thing is, is the amount available for budget is about almost exactly what it was this time last year. Overall, we're at 67.72% collection rate. This time last year, we're at 65.5, so we're slightly ahead. And just think about it this way, 1% more collections with a budget like this is basically $6.5 million. So that just kind of gives you an idea of what that looks like. On the expense side, we're at 41.17 spin rate. This time last year, we were only at 40.52, so we're slightly ahead. But I went back and looked at two previous years, and we were at 41.15 and 41.53. So we're pretty much where we need to be. Once again, we are slightly ahead where we were last year, but in terms of why projections, where I look at the dat, data, we're about 1% below what we're probably end up spending year-to-date on projections, which again, if you look at that, that's about $6.5 million. On the debt service cash analysis, this time last year, we had $144.8 million. One reason we don't have as much money is we did lower the military rate 1 mil, so we're collecting less money. That's why we reserved out money in the general fund. We reserved money out in Splosh 5, and we also have money in Splosh 6 going towards that. Special rating funds are exactly where they need to be. On capital projects, we have, right now, we've got $14.1 million in cash balance. We had 28. We are rapidly spinning down our capital projects money that's just cash-wise, not that, not the amount that's actually in reserves right now. And school nutrition actually went up a little bit. It's at 19.7. It was 18.3 this time last year. They're doing a better job of reducing expenses on that side, so that's helping a lot, especially with this type, this month, where they were basically about $1.4 million ahead of schedule in terms of collections for expenditures. For investments, we have $319 million. This time last year was about $270. Last year, we had $190 million at the end of the month versus $199. The Fund 200 debt service is new. That's $32 million in that. The Fund 353, that used to be an old LGIP account that's been repurposed for school nutrition, so now we got $10 million in there that's basically drawing interest for them as well. 354, we were at $44 million. We're quickly spinning down our Splosh 5 funds as we predicted to do. And Splosh 6 is at $54 million. We had 33 last year. Splosh collections, the first nine months, you can see, we were collecting 7.2, all the way down to 8.49 in January. As you can see, we're pretty much flat. And like I said before, last month, August, where it says 15.83, that's an anomaly because there was some extra collections, goes back a couple of years, that when Department Revenue did an audit, they found some money they forgot to send us, and it's about $700,000. So overall, the collections for the last 10 months is almost exactly zero year-over-year in terms of collections. On cash balances for elementaries, we're at $4.9 million this year, and we were $4.8 last year. For the middle schools, we're at 2.39. We're at 2.3 last year. And the high schools, we were at 6.1 or at 6.3. And the balances stayed the same as they were this time last year. There's been no change in the, in the, in the. Yes, percentages, thank you. And that's the financials for November 2023. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Okay, next, we have, there's no action items on the agenda, so we will move on to points of information.
I don't have any other than one announcement, but I'm going to make that after our public participation.
Okay. I don't believe we need another short recess. If anybody wants to go, they can just go. And now we have public participation on non-agenda items, and we have one tonight.
Hello, my name is Jer Chriselle. I was very grateful last month to hear my dear friend Pat talk about what made a good and intelligent person. I passed her test with flying colors with disagreement only on the scientific question of gender dysphoria. Sadly, her test implies that Muslims are bad and unintelligent for their beliefs, which I think shows a distinct lack of commitment to both diversity and inclusion. Having a welcoming environment for people who worship sexual deviance and people who worship Allah is obviously a challenge. But if we keep sex and sexuality out of the classroom and treat school like a professional setting, it allows those differences to coexist and not come into conflict with each other. Sexual morality is a conversation to be had at home, not at a place of work. And my dear friend Pat might not see school as a place of hard, earnest work for children to learn the skills they need to succeed in higher education in the workplace. She seems to think it is simply an extension of family and that the kitchen table topics she has in her home should be a part and parcel of every Muslim child's experience at public school. It's easy to understand how she could have come to that conclusion. School has historically been a place of support for the ups and downs of puberty and adolescence and has, over time, extended to assist those with developmental disabilities and mental illnesses. And if you truly believe that we must expose children to every form of kink so they can reject Islam and fully realize their socio-sexual identity, well, of course, you'll want to be a groomer. But my kids aren't her kids, and they don't belong to the schools, teachers, or staff either. We don't have the right to insert ourselves into the deeply personal and private conversations that Muslim families have about sex and sexuality. Those discussions should be up to the parents to have outside our professional school setting. And this goes both ways. I would be just as concerned with a Muslim teacher expressing their diverse sexual viewpoints at school, preaching that all gays are going to hell and should be thrown off of buildings to kill them, as I would be with a woke teacher preaching that every sexual kink is completely normal and exploring those kinks have no negative consequences. To answer my dear friend Pat's other question, reading a book about a gay character isn't going to turn you gay, and reading a book about a straight character isn't going to turn you straight. What you want is an interesting character that represents universal human traits, not superficial fashion choices. And trying to promote books focused on deviant sexuality is as superficial as you can get, unless, of course, you're talking about Alan Turing, the man who literally saved the world from Nazis with his cryptography work, was chemically castrated through hormone therapy simply because he was gay. It should shame us that today, we have normalized this same kind of chemical castration for young homosexuals swept up in the trans hysteria. Once again, I would like to humbly ask the board to make sure that any students who present with mental illnesses regarding gender dysphoria be treated with respect and care and are immediately referred to the mental health counseling necessary to help them accept their perfectly healthy, natural-born bodies. And so, on that note, thank you very much for your time. And again, I'd love to pay for lunch for anybody who disagrees with me. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I do have one final announcement to make as we wrap up calendar year 2023. I want to share with our community and our Forsyth County Schools family, my intent to retire as your superintendent effective November 1, 2024. I'm sharing this information publicly tonight to afford our Board of Education the time necessary to search for our new superintendent. This year marks my 34th year in public education, my 19th as a superintendent. It's been a wonderful journey, from tiny little limestone man serving 330 students on the Canadian border to serving more than 55,000 students in our states and nations, one of our state's and nation's largest and most successful school systems. I've had several stops along this journey, and without question, this has been my absolute favorite. I'm proud of our work over the past 10 years that I've served as your superintendent. We've always had and continue to have today a highly effective governance team. I thank previous board members, the members of this board, past and present members of my cabinet for your leadership and your service. We are so fortunate to live and work in a community that values public education and provides lots of resources and support for kids. No doubt, that will continue. I pledge to this board and to our community and to my colleagues to work just as faithfully and just as hard over my last 10 months as I have these last 10 years. Tonight is certainly not a farewell speech, nor is it goodbye. There'll be time for that later. But I felt compelled to share my intention now to ensure a smooth transition for our wonderful school system and our community, and I wish all of our students, staff, board members, and entire community a very safe and enjoyable holiday season. Thanks, Arla.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Mike and a second by Tom, all in favor? Unanimous.